Would you push the button? Thank you.
We get Joel for starting the meeting, too, right?
I don't think so yet.
Well, that said, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming to me. First item on the agenda is review and approval of minutes from the power meeting. If anybody's got any additions or corrections in what kind of the minutes, please be kind enough to share them. Otherwise, I would look for a motion, please.
I will motion and approve the meeting minutes.
We have a motion to approve the meeting minutes. We have a second.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have taken care of the minutes. I was hoping it would be more than just a group of us going through this next item on the agenda. But do we have any additional feedback, given the table zoning ordinance from last month?
Mr. Chairmember of the commission, at this point, I've got a couple of things I want to walk through with you. Just, you know, we, we sent out an email to about a hundred different people that signed up for notification during the comprehensive planning process, notifying them that we're continuing the review of the zoning code. And then information was posted on the city's Facebook page and was also sent out to the city newsletter, notifying of it. We've had over six hundred views. That doesn't mean that we've had six hundred individual people that have looked at the information on the zoning code. It means six hundred times people have hit it. I know I've hit it a dozen times or more myself, so you can kind of do the math on that. But I adventure guessed that a good two to three hundred unique visits or more were made on the website. So we've had a lot of people looking at it. We haven't fielded any questions, right, Linda? I think there are a few early development questions, but more just, you know, where are things asked? We did have a couple of developers that inquired, you know, how do I get to it? And we directed them. So they looked at it and no one came back with any needs or comments. There are two properties that I think are worthy of discussion tonight. I'm going to take the hard one first. I have maps and everything. If it would help, just let me know and I'll flip those up on the screen. But I'm sure you're all very familiar with these sites. The first one is the hard one. That's at Sixteenth and Fifty-Seven, across from the high school. That's L and K Trucking. There's a parcel, two parcels that they own that they operate, a truck terminal operation out of, as well as some truck repair. There's a parcel to the north of them that's a foot, I think is the owner of that. There's a house on one side and it looks like a parking of trucks on the other side, and it looks like there's also a terminal operation there as well. The property to the north, the foot property, is currently zoned, single-family residential. And so the trucking operation out of there is already a non-conforming use. And as far as I know, or am familiar with it, it's probably a grandfathered in, non-conforming use. I know that the business and talking with folks in the area has been there a long time. And L and K Trucking, the larger parcel, the larger operation, is zoned C-three highway business, highway commercial. And in the C-three district, the truck repair portion of it is permitted, but the terminal portion of it would require a conditional use permit. I don't believe they have one, so arguably, they're also currently non-conforming, legally non-conforming. So what does it mean to be legally non-conforming? It means you can continue your operations as is. You can maintain them. You just can't expand. And Sheldon, you can speak to this, as you've been dealing with this recently. The bigger issue with it is financing. If you ever need to get a loan from a bank, a bank is going to look at your operation. They're going to see you're non-conforming and they might say, yeah, maybe not. And that's probably the bigger issue with being a legally non-conforming use. It certainly affects the saleability of your property. If I'm buying the property knowing it's legally non-conforming, I know I'm buying something I can't expand, and I'm buying something that I know ultimately the city's desire that it's not there. It's a different use at some point in the future. So it's perfectly normal to have legally non-conforming uses. Zoning is the tool that communities often use to see, to force, or to incent sort of the transition of uses to a desirable, a more desirable use. The comprehensive plan guides that node, a retail service node, mentioning proximity to an arterial highway. And I think if we all recognize the growth of the community, that service node being on the edge to serve the north part of the community, so you don't have to go to Manorville, nor do you have to go necessarily into the core part of the city. That's the idea of that service node. The trucking terminal is not necessarily consistent with that vision, and so that's why we've been looking at a rezoning. Having said all that, what we're currently showing there with the zoning, rezoning is to move it to C-two. That would make the use non-conforming further by not even allowing them to apply for C.P. And the challenge that we face is, do we, do we force that rezoning now or do we wait? We've done the heavy lifting of the zoning works, getting the format changed and modifying all the tweaks that we've made to it, addressing a lot of the comprehensive plan inconsistencies. And this is one of the parcels that you've got a lot of things happening with it. One, Highway Forty-Seven, in the intersection there in the roundabout, is going to force them to change some access to it. And the idea of extending Sixteenth Street West is also something that's going to impact them. So there's a lot of other things happening with that property that, after talking with the engineer and thinking more through this, it may be prudent to leave that one as it is now and look at that sometime down the road when we start to get a better feel for right-of-way needs. And roundabout, it's very clear that we've talked about it. We're moving in the direction of exploring, is there a better solution? They are a valuable business. They've got a lot of jobs there. And if we can work with them over a longer period of time to figure out how we can help them grow and expand, I think that may be the better solution. We have not talked to them. I reached out, left a couple of messages, one voice and one, well, voice with our dispatcher, and one via email. It was late last week, so they haven't had a ton of time to get back to us. But any sense, that one, what I'm suggesting, I think, is a prudent approach, is to revert it back to what it currently is zoned. That's the C-three, and not changing its current zone. The other one, and we'll circle back and take these one at a time. The other one is Sheldon's properties on the southwest side of town. They're a very unique situation, where you've got a house in a shed that is business operation, and they are adjacent to an industrial property and then adjacent to a green belt. And then beyond that is guided long-term for residential. So they're kind of in this transition area. The current zoning on that property is that residential commercial, a mixed use, if you will. And we had suggested regiding it to the holding zone because we saw it as sort of a transition. Read the definition of the R.C. district. It also talks about a transition. And if we, if we went to the holding zone pattern, it would make the residential piece non-conforming and the commercial piece non-conforming until they request a rezoning. And that creates hardship with the current operations that are there today. And so that's another one where, not because of all the other issues, but because it's not a major impact, it's a smaller parcel, there's not necessarily a ton of development capacity unless it redevelops, and in that case, they would come forward with some kind of plan, and we would look for the comp plan to guide it. So that's the other one that I think if we flip that from holding zone to R.C., that keeps things the way it is and would be arguably consistent with the comprehensive plan. So those two are kind of map changes. Those are the only two that, when looking at all the different impacted properties that we felt were ones we should probably rethink and tools for you for discussion and making your recommendations. The only other change to the zoning code, Linda and Tim kind of picked up on a discussion we had prior that we kind of missed, and that was the rear yard setbacks for the residential district. We have fifteen feet in there, and that was supposed to be twenty-five feet. So that was more of a typo. So if you look in the R-one or R-one A, well, all the residential districts, we flipped from fifteen feet setback to a twenty-five feet setback. So that change and then the two zoning. I think the rezoning ones, the map ones, are a good topic of discussion for you all. With that, I would pause. I don't know if there's anything else that I have to ever...
No, I think you covered it pretty succinctly. And I think we took a look at these, and obviously, they are, you know, areas where we expect to see some change, but didn't seem like there was a reason to force that absolutely at this time, so.
And I will add, we're going to continue to reach out to the owners at L and K and so it, and have that conversation prior to the council. If we don't have it, we'll just continue down the course. We are, if we do, we'll be able to bring their input to the council.
What is our process and steps moving forward? I mean, we're voting on, potentially voting on this tonight.
Yeah, you've had your, you've had your public hearing. You've met the requirements. And, yeah, so I think the council will be looking for a recommendation from the planning commission, and then they'd make a decision on their, you know, finalization of it, and then it would be, you know, finalized and published. You know, we'd always, if we wanted to have it out before the end of the year, and the developers have gotten copies of it already, so that was the biggest concern. And I think, as Brad mentioned, we didn't really have a lot of feedback. I had a meeting last week with Tony Bigelow, and he didn't see any issues per se when I asked him about it. So, and it doesn't really affect him a lot because he's developing, you know, new areas. Not so much about previously zoned areas. So just a matter of explaining what that development holding means to them. And once they understand that, I don't think it's a huge issue, so.
I read everything that Brad outlined. Makes sense, particularly the Cunningham property, just to let that occur naturally as it starts to develop.
Yeah, I agree.
I will say, the E.D.A. has looked at the property on the southwest part of the town that the city owns, and that they're trying to, they're doing some mapping right now with the city engineer to see what will be necessary to develop that area and kind of seeing what would be the best uses of it. Now, right now, that was all classified as park. However, with its exposure to the highway and the growth of fourteen, as well as Fifty-Seven potentially going farther to the south until it breaks over to the east, you know, it might be a more useful property for some other kind of development. So, you know, they are kind of taking a look at that right now. And that might be an area where some businesses in town that we've had some issues would be better shifted to because of its closeness to fourteen. I mean, a trucking business might make more sense in that kind of zone, kind of like where A and A is at, a little bit more, you know, kind of that type of business. Same thing with Mr. Wilk's property. You know, talk about that one. But his business might be better served in a, where he has a little bit more space. You know, he's squeezed, and his is going to be affected immediately, you know, by development because it's right on the, you know, it's abutting in development that's already started, you know, with Bigelow void eight. So we're trying to provide that opportunity kind of as a release valve for some of these businesses that may want to grow with that kind of stuff. So, and the full of the time, I think the property on the north side will be more valuable as a residential or commercial development. And so the pure economics of it will drive the switch, the transition to some other type of, you know, business. Linda, do you have anything to add? Linda, do you have anything to add?
No, I didn't.
Okay. I mean, I, I think that, you know, folks that are interested in this will be stat. And I don't think that the, you know, board can be overly concerned, you know. Sometimes it's good if we don't get a lot of feedback. People are, they're accepting it. And for most, the vast majority of people in town, they're not conceiving dramatic changes at all, which is, you know, ideal, I guess.
And I think it's also important to recognize that just because we've rezoned it a certain way and someone has a plan to do something different, there is processes. And one of the things the zoning code does is spell out those processes a little more clearly, clearly, so that people know there is a path, should they want to change it or see it as something different, there is a process and a path to go through, so.
Gentlemen, any more thoughts, comments, concerns, ideas that you can share or freshen?
No, I'll move to recommend to the city council approval of the zoning yards with the changes discussed.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck with the next city council meeting, guys.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, very much. Dodge County Solar Propose.
So this is, this is more informational for you, but it potentially will be coming up here and something that the, I'd like the planning commission to be well apprised of. So this was something that was sent to me, you know, the company's name is Solarstone, and Brad sat down on our meeting. He was over the phone or over the computer or whatnot. But these folks are solar developers, and they've done a number of projects. If you look at their PowerPoint in the area already, Dodge County is interested in developing a parcel which is abutting their dump site, actually, in the area we just discussed, kind of north of where Sixteenth Street would be. Yeah, Brad, that's great that you can bring that up. And in a lot of cases, they wouldn't necessarily even have to ask us about it. However, this lot is in city limits. And so because of its scope and size, the city itself and the planning commission and city council will have some ability to influence what happens there. And when I met with them, we did go through this proposal and talk about it a little bit, and we, and I know the city engineer, I both mentioned that we weren't entirely comfortable with the proposal. However, we did let them know that it was a potentially viable proposal. There are a number of factors that we feel like would have to be put in place in terms of screening and buffering, especially if Sixteenth Street, if it were to build out to the west, having that solar right abutting the street itself would be problematic, I think, certainly unsightly for other commercial development, and it certainly wouldn't be as valuable either. In the full of the time, it does abut up against the dump. So we do recognize that there's some limited value to that total parcel. And part of the issue is that they're looking for a one-meg project, which typically wouldn't have a problem fitting, but kind of where that pointer is on the north side there is where the natural gas line runs through. And because of the rules the natural gas company has, it creates a large easement, which isn't able to be built on because, I didn't realize exactly how this works, but they do drive a fifteen-foot pile on, sealed pile onto the ground. And so it does have an effect on anything that's buried there. So what they would like to do is they would rather not use the top, like maybe the north quarter of that lot at all, which is where I would rather flip it. If I could say, hey, don't use the bottom quarter of the lot, then I would say, you know what, I guess you wish to do. The other issue the county will run into is that it's a thirty-year contract, which is where I see a problem for us is, you know, in ten years, it probably wouldn't impact the city a lot because you have that shooty property developed. Even twenty years, we might not have any problems. But at the end of thirty years, I would fully expect that area to be sort of encompassed into the city. And knowing what's going to be to the north there with the quarry, too, and the changes that will happen there over the next thirty years, I mean, I think long-term, that could be an interesting amenity for Carson, especially being between Manorville and Carson as a possibly recreation area or something like that. You know, it just doesn't seem like it's a very good fit inside city limits. But I said it was potentially viable. He, that's what he wanted to hear. I have him going to be going up to the county board to hear what he presents to them tomorrow during their meeting. You've got the stats and the facts there, and I certainly would answer any questions I could. Brad, did you have anything to add off of your findings there?
Yeah, the only thing I would add, the current zoning code is kind of silent on the idea of solar farms. As a zoning administrator, we would say because the code doesn't identify it as a permitted use, it's not allowable use. The proposed zoning code recognizes solar farms are a big thing. And what we've said in the proposed zoning code, and this is pretty consistent with corporate municipalities, is in the I-three district, I think the industrial district, it would be a conditional use permit. And the reason for the C.P. is a lot of what Tim just brought up. There are certain conditions and things that we want to apply to it to make sure that a long-term use surrounding that area is something we're keeping in consideration. And so there are standards built into the zoning code that's proposed, that you just approved, that will address a lot of the things, and it will come back to you for rezoning and that conditional use permit. We would do those currently if it moved forward, and so there will be a lot of design considerations that will be brought into it. And we've talked to them about it. They know we're in the process of, you know, approving our zoning code, so they haven't made application yet, so they will fall under the new zoning code.
Brad, you work with a number of cities. Do you have any experience with solar farms being this close to or within city limits?
Yes. And I would say cities are hot and cold on it. Some cities are okay if we design it a certain way, and a lot of cities, part of the C.P. includes that they have a decommissioning process for those solar farms, and they put up a security, which is a pretty big investment. Most solar farms are doing something like that, so if there's a dollar that they can do to decommission them. Some cities that are not so hot on it have said no to a solar farm on a piece of land all by itself. Yes to a solar farm if you're putting them on rooftops in an industrial park where you've got to put the flat roofs or, you know, something else like that. If you can, you can optimize the use and not lose tax-based lap, lose job-based not lose, some of the amenities that Tim was talking about. So it's really a, it's a hit or miss. And those cities that are more developed, metro areas, that have those bigger industrial parks are doing the rooftop kind of thing. Cities on the fringe, I know, like, some of the growing cities on the fringe of metro area are really grappling with, do we allow this to happen? Some of them will cap the size of them, so they can't be too big. So it's kind of a hit or miss.
I had a question. Maybe somebody could refresh my memory. Seems to me we were talking about the pieces of land up in there, and one pertained to L.C. Trucking, and that piece of property that the county was going to let a road go in up along the edge of that, had something to do with that, those pieces up in there?
Yeah, you talked about, Brad talked about accessibility there on Fifty-Seven and that roundabout is done. And that, that was another question I had because, yeah, right where he's got the pointer there is, the idea was kind of to bring that, formalize a road kind of behind there because they felt like the front end road was unlikely to be retained if that was expanded. I mean, there's just won't be space for it. And so that, that's another concern. That, that's part of the reason, as I said, where if they would take that bottom quarter of that property they have, I think it flew over fifteen acres, and that would be the area that was like, you know, if we were to acquire them to do some kind of planting, you know, if they planted a heavy arborial tree or trees or something like that, and they gave us that right-of-way to do a road extension, then I don't know if that would be a big issue because it would be properly screened. You know, most people wouldn't even know it's there, you know, because it'd be, it would be visible for most folks. We do have a couple of them, you guys are well aware, off the dump road, there's a lot of solar up there. You've got a small, I think, one meg off of Jeff Oldie's property, and then you've got a real big one up there, and I forget the fellow who owns the property there, but I think he's got like a five-meg one up there, and it's, it's a substantial amount. And a lot of folks driving along that road on, would probably not even, I mean, they might see it, but they don't even think about it because it's, you know, if it's properly screened, it's not a problem. You know, and I mean, to me, with the cities in the past, at least, discussed doing solar on some of the property that the sewer plant sits on. You know, we've got a large parcel there that isn't going to be developed for houses or anything like that. It's not real accessible. And so I don't want to be disingenuous and say, well, we're going to do solar in town, but you can't. And so I do think if, if we could see it meet certain criteria, that would be fine. But it does get to be problematic with that natural gas line on the north quarter of the lot for them space-wise, so.
You know, the natural gas line prevents them from installing their, their solar panels on it. But you can put a driveway across it so they could do both sides, but that then impacts their, kind of their operations if all of a sudden they can't, you know. But to Tim's, to Tim's point, this, you know, when we look at this, I think of this road coming across here, if we could have better access, not right on to Fifty-Seven for this operation, that's one of the reasons I suggested, let's just let them sit and let's work with them. We don't know what's going to happen with that parcel. We don't know how Sixteenth Street's going to come across. Brandon's working on Fifty-Seven and designing the roundabout. So is this a better use, that southern piece, to Tim's point? To me, that's where if we're going to have a commercial kind of synergy there, it fits that, then it transitions to the solar panels, and you've got the landfill on the left, and there's a, there's less of an impact if our neighborhood grows up to it. So I think there is some merit to that. Some of the, you have my experience, one of the communities that wasn't so hot on it, really dove into the research about what's the, what's the impact of the, on residential properties and residential neighborhoods. The reality is, it's, it's, you find one study that says there's a tremendous impact, you find another study that says there's not. It's really about, you know, the impact to an existing neighborhood, more so than a neighborhood that's growing to it if it's already there. So I think you've got a good possibility that it could work there. You've just got to figure out how the design works. The, the gas line is a challenge, but we'll, we'll be able to work with them. We're in the process to figure all that out.
The other thing I think we need to just not lose sight of is, well, what's going to happen to the radon property? Because MINDOC has already come out and said that they're not interested in creating another access on Fifty-Seven. So we need to be able to, yeah, provide access to that.
You're thinking of bringing that front row all the way up to the north, maybe?
Well, or the one behind the Cunningham property.
That's what I mean, the front and back of the north behind them.
Yeah.
Well, that could be, I mean, to me, I guess, I just think long-term, and that's kind of what I thought, was okay. That's why I said, like, I could see ten years, it's probably fine. Twenty years, it mightn't be fine. But thirty years from now, you're going to want to have that, the front row that goes all the way north up to Sixteen, and that's going to be worth way more of a commercial park or whatever than it is a solar. And maybe that works out, but, yeah.
Well, and solar and commercial may be a happy marriage.
It could be. It could be, yeah, localized power source. But, I mean, right now, I think their plan is to, they're going to run into Excel. Excel's got their, you know, sub right in town here, so that's where it's going to go, you know, and we'll probably end up buying some of it to Excel. So, you know, through a rigmarole, we buy power through them, they generate it, but, yeah.
I mean, how much of a, how much of this land do they, I mean, it says that they want to use the twenty acres, but they can only use fifteen. And if we start asking them to put some more constraints on it, it really becomes an unusable project possibly.
I don't think so.
Well, I mean, I told them it was potentially viable, but it has to go through a number of hoops. I mean, you know, I, go ahead, Lon.
If they can keep five acres to the south, you know, as a buffer, and allow us the right-of-way to have a road on the east side of their property, I would have no issue with it.
By the time you take and put a road in there, how much of that east side of that property are you going to use?
You aren't going to use that much.
Well, the road is...
Sixty feet.
Sixty feet wide. How wide is that piece of property? By the time, you know, by the time you get to property lines.
Is there anything about that, to that chunk of land compared to other options in town, that makes it attractive for somebody to come in and develop their solar panels? I mean, the...
Well, I guess they're, I mean, the county is going to have reasonably favorable terms as opposed to somebody who has more of a, a more viable farm property. Right now, they've got somebody farming it, and there's, I don't know if they've been getting two hundred acre, probably not even that much right now.
It's about five hundred feet.
They're going to make a lot more off of that than they, and the county also is thinking, well, we want buffering from the dump, so.
Does that transmission line have anything to do with it?
Yeah, and then the fact that Excel's got their sub right here and that it's so close. I mean, Excel will just be able to run a line right into their, their three-phase on, on Fifty-Seven, and it's, you know, going to cost them almost nothing for them to run their line in. I drove around with, with our electric supervisor this morning, and we looked at sites because I had some questions about. He said, that's really all you have to do is hook the three-phase in and, and it's right there. So that's probably why they're looking at it, period, I guess.
Not only that, if you take and put that road right on the property line, and, you know, everybody foot and everybody else is going to understand that thirty feet of their property is going to become a road, you're only taking thirty feet into Dodge County.
Yeah, I'm just going to look at it here quick. Yeah, I mean, part of it is, you know, who's going to pay for a road and things like that, too? But I think if we just wrapped in a, an easement along that, the west property lines of rados and the east property line of Dodge County, I don't think you'd lose a ton of territory. And I don't know if we even need five acres on the south end. You know, if it was screened properly, could you do it with three? Maybe you, you could. I don't know. You know, it's certainly, and I don't want to overplay this either because I know we've got other things to talk about, but I did want to bring it to you as informational. The county hasn't taken any action on it yet. It certainly will come back to the planning commission if something does come to fruition. So, you know, there's a lot of good questions, but I don't have all the answers to it, and I don't work on it, so.
I do know that these are popping up all over the county, and the township is routine of these popping up on tilable land.
Right.
So the more they pop up, the more of a battle it's going to become.
I think if you allow a solar farm on there, not against it, but you've taken away enough potential development that it doesn't become feasible for anybody to put a private drive in there. I mean, seven, eight hundred bucks, you know, thousand bucks a millennial foot for a road, if you're going to put a road back there, you're going to need, you're going to need enough, you need enough land to be able to develop. You probably would need both sides of that road to make it viable.
You jump up for the development, the solar developer, or?
No, I'm saying if, if somebody were to want to develop the north side of, of the, you know, that Radell property, and they're trying to access it from, from the south, you know, at a thousand feet just to get there, that's a million bucks. So, how do you start to sell off enough land at a reasonable price? That, if there's a solar farm going up the one side, my gut is, there's no development that's going to happen on the north side because you just won't have enough. Somebody's going to have to, in order to do that, they're going to have to buy the county property and the Radell property to be able to justify that road. And that still may not happen for twenty years, but, you know, when you start to save that valuable land, if it's.
Well, I mean, part of this process certainly, as Brad described, you know, if we did even take a look at it, we'd go through that conditional use process, and we'd give it an opportunity for the joint property owners to certainly others, saying, I suspect they would. Have some things to say, just like you're talking about, because they recognize that probably just as much as anybody else, and.
But they may, they may really like it that, hey, let's put a solar farm in there because now we don't have to worry about anybody trying to develop, and it's just going to stay the way it is. And the solar farm is asking for access across right off of fifty-seven off of one of those, if that's what I saw in the, in the middle. Says the road, says road access number two is right off the highway, didn't you?
That's on the front.
Yeah, they, they had, their impression of it was incorrect. They thought there was right of way all the way through the Radell property. And actually, that, that easement cuts off when you hit to the border of his property there.
Okay, and so that wouldn't even be an access.
No, that, that one would not be feasible. I mean, it might be usable right now if you just drove over the grass.
Yeah, access road number one is actually off of the dump road.
Right, it'd be coming all the way from the west side.
Right.
So, access, access number two would not exist.
Well, I mean, if we started talking about expanding sixteen, and, you know, he got excited because, I mean, I'm sure they would love that. I mean, they would love it if they could just, if we, if even if we just did that parcel, you know, shooty's parcel there, if we popped it out to the end where the dump starts, I mean, that'd be easy for them then. But now, they're going to have to run a road all the way through, kind of, and make sure it's maintained all the way along the backside. But I just wanted to bring this to you because it's interesting and it's something that's coming. And also put that, you know, kind of nugget in your minds too, that eventually we may want to look at a solar farm here by the sewer plant, and that'll be another project that could be coming in the next five to ten years. So, it's like, like someone said, I mean, they're, they're popping up all over the place. And Excel's got this commitment to, I don't know, where, this eighty percent renewal by 2050. And, you know, they're going to have to have projects like this all over the place to make it work, so.
And Mr. Radell gets Linda this, that land is going to be for sale a little bit to that solar farm.
Well, that was, that was the other thing I thought about is they may just say, hey, can we buy you? No, that's not a huge parcel either. And either he'll lease it to them, or he'll sell it to them or somebody because, I mean, I don't, I think it was, what was it, eight hundred, nine hundred an acre? That's what they're getting lease-wise for that for a year, for thirty years, so it's something. More than, more than corn or bean, that's for sure.
I ran into a gentleman at a wild game that, I asked him, he did leasing of land for solar farms. And he says, it's way less expensive to lease land than it is to put it on top of rooftops.
Sure.
Said rooftops with the maintenance cost and having to do everything every twenty years, it's just not even feasible. I said, okay, all right. That explains why I see them popping up all over.
It's feasible in a placement of land values.
Yeah, yeah.
But, yeah, that's why. Got you.
So, I got it, that time.
Uh, is there something else on the solar proposal? We've got an activity list here in front of us. Is this the variances in conditional use permits or?
So, as part of a request earlier this year, we have begun basically reviewing the CUP's variances that have been grabbed over the last twenty or so years. And we've got staff working on that right now. I know Lynn's been looking at it real hard, and Nanty's actually been taking a look at it too. So, we're going to be reviewing those and making sure that things have been followed up on to the best of our ability, but it's quite a list. So, as I guess we can.
Actually, you can see it's not so bad because the conditional use permits have been for an electronic sign or for.
Yeah, it will be a little. Pretty easily, right.
Or for, I mean, there hasn't been a lot of conditional use permits if you really go through and look at it for other things. So, the list is actually quite small, although you seem like you hear the word conditional use permit all the time.
Yeah, and we got a nine-year gap. Right, doesn't open that. We go from February two thousand.
Yep, there is a, there is a gap in there.
To January two thousand twelve.
Right, I'm problematic with records there. I'm not sure if you've got a plan on how we're going to reconcile that, Linda.
I have to go to the basement and get the minutes out.
So, I mean, I, I know Linda's trying to complicate, but it will be a lot of work to do it. It's just going to be a time thing more than the difficulty factor. It's, we're going to try and reconstruct those, try and reconstruct some of those records, so.
Well, don't go out and pick in too many fights with too many people all at once. You might want to like space them out, one or two at once.
I don't fight anybody. I mean, yeah, whatever the council wants.
I commend you for going through the process, so.
Yeah, well, we want to try and, you know, make sure that all the records are always as good as we can have, so.
Anything else we need to discuss this evening?
Yeah, there's one other item that I emailed out to, to the members earlier this week, or last, late last week here, was regarding the PUD for the five oh four development, and it was some questions regarding one of the lots. So, you know, I'll reference that here. We're going to cover that in other. So, we know that this project's been through a number of different iterations. And you should have received a copy of the approved plat map in your email. The question is on the lot that is in front of Mr. Thompson's house. It's a lot that I'm not sure if we discussed at depth. In one of the city engineer's reports that he generated in May, he was under the understanding that it would be an outlot. And so, during a, I guess, a final review in September when he was taking a look at it, he had some questions about it. And when I returned from, you know, from my trip, he brought it to my attention. And then I talked with, with him a little bit, and Mr. Thompson, I know, had some questions about it as well. So, we just wanted to bring, I just wanted to bring this in front of you, just to sort of make sure that we're all on the same page. Mr. Thompson is, his belief is that it's, it's been a lot that he's designated for development. And so, I want to be able to make sure that we're having clarity there on the public record on that, so. I don't know if you had anything here and you want to talk about it there.
No, I just, it was, it was missed the first go around with the previous administrator and got put back in. And when we changed from the twelve or twelve larger pounds to twelve smaller, I'm, you know, I'm not sure where it ever got missed, and I was assumed it was always there. So, I just want, you know, Tim just wanted to make sure that everybody was okay with it. And because it has a big effect, effect on the, on the development, so.
I think the concerns the city engineer had were regarding it being sort of a dead-end line there until it's developed. And I certainly think from an engineering standpoint, I can understand his concerns. I'm not sure that it will be any different than any of the other lines before they get developed. I mean, once we see development there, it probably should be fine. But certainly, it's up to the, the planning board to have any feedback they have on that.
It's going to be one water service, not, not three or four. So, it would be one water service going to that, that site.
So, do you envision that as like a duplex, or?
Yeah.
Is there any feedback anybody has on that? Otherwise, I mean, if there aren't any questions about that, then I guess we'll consider it to be, considered as part of the plot as a regular lot as requested by the, the developer. It won't change any of their, their plats or anything like that. It just, I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of it and that we're all kind of on the same page.
Yeah, we all had access to the plat maps at the time of approval. That's what the actual is based on.
Because the, the original engineer drawings had, had a water service to that. And then when it went through the, changing to the twelve smaller lots, that's, I can see it was an oversight because we were, the discussion was always twelve lots, but we were incorporating the other two that were being added, so we're being a part of it.
Any questions, Lon? You're studying pretty good. I like it.
Intended.
So, you're not going to put sewer and water into that lot?
Yes, I am.
Sewer and water?
Yes, yep. That is the intent, so it's done, so you don't have to come back and rip anything up.
It just doesn't show it.
No, because, yeah, and I think that's where some of the oversight was, and that's where we need to get it updated, so. It should have, should just be a short little line that goes in there.
I guess if it shows everything on the final, it's fine.
Yeah.
You're good? For now?
Get the man another Pepsi, come on. Well, I appreciate that. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. And I like to try and bring these things to you, so of course, it's part of the public record as well that we all kind of got a chance to look at. And there aren't questions till later on, but we, you know, we didn't put it out there for folks, so. That's all I've got.
Wonderful. Anything else, gentlemen?
Short and sweet.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. You okay, Colin? You're very quiet this morning. Concerned.
Didn't you hear, didn't you hear the little boy was five years old, he never said anything, and his parents were so concerned? And then finally, he.